Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the organizational meeting of the city council. Today is Monday, January 4th, 2021. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Council President Kuschmerich, would you kindly lead us in the flag?
Be honest. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, and to the Republic of which is one nation under the indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Zarella, would you kindly lead us in the vote for remote participation?
Certainly, a move that we suspend all rules of this council or of our parliamentary authority, which conflict with either the remote participation format or with the state guidance on remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. This will be done by roll call vote. President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Madam Chair, I want to say that I'm going to vote for it this time, but I think it's time that we move to the council chambers and they can zoom out to the public office. There will be another vote yes for me on this.
I'm sorry, this time yes, thank you, sir. Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous. This meeting was published and people had until 10:00 AM today, which is now, to give public comments, and we did not have any, so we'll move right on with the warrant. The meeting is called for the following purposes. Election of this council president for year 2021, an election of the council vice president for the year 2021, Order 1-2021, adopting the rules of the city council for year 2021, and Order 2-2021, setting dates of regular meetings of the city council for year 2021. I will now open the floor for nominations for the office of council president.
I'd like to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Anthony Zarella.
Check in.
Okay. Do I have any other? I'm sorry?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
All right. We're going to do the closing by roll call vote. President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz? Sorry, Counselor Schultz?
You're muted.
You're muted, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous. I have a nomination and second for Anthony Zarella for president. I'd like to do this by unanimous consent unless there is any objection. Seeing none, congratulations, President Zarella.
Thank you, and thank all of you for your support.
You're welcome, sir.
So that being said, we now need a vice president, and I will declare the nominations open, and I will nominate Counselor Walsh.
Second.
Move nominations be closed?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, second, close nominations. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Of course. Counselor Kuschmerich.
Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
All right, that is unanimous.
So nominations are closed. I noticed we also had some votes for Counselor Walsh as vice president, but again, I'll do this by unanimous consent since we have only one nominee unless there is objection. Seeing none, congratulations, Vice President Walsh.
Thank you very much. Thanks, thanks to all of you.
As a brief order of business, I am also going to request per, I'm sorry, per rule. I should have this memorized by now. 1.3, I am going to request that Counselor, that Vice President Walsh also act as my parliamentarian for the year.
Motion?
Uh, no, it's, it's just by.
Oh, okay, all right.
Counselor Walsh is, or Vice President Walsh, is that good with you?
I am happy to fill that role for you, sir.
Thank you very much. In that case, we will move on to the first order of business, which is the setting of the rules for the upcoming year. We have two slates of proposed rule changes. One is mine, the other is from Counselor Boishman. I will defer to Counselor Boishman for the first two proposed rule changes.
Our proposed rule number 4.6, I'm going to hold off on that till I can sit with Vinnie for a while. We talked over the, over the weekend, and he asked me to hold off, and I said I would, right, Vinnie?
In that case, I would like to entertain a motion to hold that matter until, let's say, the first meeting of February.
I'm moved.
On the motion?
Counselor Dina Tally?
President, if I may, to the solicitor?
Go ahead.
Why, why is this being recommended that we hold this? Is this, is this rule change not what you and former assistant solicitor Tree advocated strongly against? Why are you advocating we hold this?
I've been asked for a written opinion on the topic.
Okay.
President Zarella had reached out as well and asked for a written opinion. I spoke with Counselor Boishman. I explained to him what I thought my position might be, but I assured him that I would review it in earnest and that I would supply a, an opinion on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Speaking on the motion, any further comments? Okay, I will ask for unanimous consent on this. Seeing no objection, it is held until the first meeting in February. Counselor Boishman, your second proposed amendment?
My second proposed amendment is that I would prefer that not the council president align the seats that they go by lot, like we used to have at one time, and we draw. I saw no problem with the way we did it prior, and I kind of liked it because it was a change all the time differently, so you got to sit next to somebody else. Not that I didn't mind sitting next to you, Anthony. But I, I just feel that I find no big deal in pulling a name out of a hat or a number out of a hat, and that's where you sit. That's why I did it. Go back to the old way.
All right, on that, we have Counselor Dina Tally speak.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, we, we've been hopscotching on this one. It used to be by lot that it was council president picks. I recall that the reason for that change in the rule to what it currently is is because some counselors didn't like what their lot pick was, so they would swap with other counselors and kind of negated the need to have a lot pick. So I would take Counselor Boishman's proposal further in saying, if we are to agree that it would go back to a lot pick, that the, the, the city clerk draws the names out of a hat, and what you get for a seating number is what you get. No, no trades, because we, the reason we changed it was because we were trading. So I just want to take his and amend it further to say, no trades. Whatever your seat is, that's what your seat is.
So Counselor, I believe as, as currently worded, the rule, the proposed rule would not allow for any trading. It would be an assignment by lot. I think the trading in the past was sort of informal outside the rules to begin with.
Okay.
That being said, I would also.
Would this rule, adopted as is, negate the need, prevent trading?
Yes, if enforced, yes.
Then fine, then fine, yep.
Okay, and I, I see Counselor Boishman would like to respond, and Counselors Fleming and Green would also like to speak. I'd just like to briefly remind the council that the other reason we switched this, it was actually my first organizational meeting, so I remember it fairly well, was to ensure that when we have freshman counselors, they never accidentally by lot wind up with a seatmate who is only a, a fellow freshman. They've always got a veteran counselor next to them to ensure that they have someone to draw on for experience in their first and second terms. For example, we're going to have a new freshman counselor at the end of the month. We don't know who it is, but we're going to have someone, and with, with absolutely no offense intended to counselors Schultz, Kutcher, or Van Hasenga, they would be at a disadvantage if they wound up sandwiched between one, two of the freshman counselors simply because, you know, they'd be in similar positions of short experience.
Mr. President, do I, do I still have the floor for one quick statement?
Just, I think I'm going to have to go to the other counselor's voice, but I have your marker in. Okay, Counselor Boishman, I'll allow you to respond first.
No, I'll get the chat to, I mean, I'll listen to them all speak for now till I can hear what they have to say, because I already talked once.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fleming?
I believe you already referenced the reason why I believe we were, we were assigned seating was because there was a, there was, I think there was four or five new counselors that year, and you wanted to sit them with some experienced counselors, so that was my understanding. So wherever we, wherever this goes, that's fine with me.
All right, thank you, Counselor Green.
I would like to just add that if we're going to amend 1.8, that it, that the sentence end with, "Seats in the council chamber for the members thereof shall be determined by lot," period, and then no, no seat adjustments may occur.
Is that in the, is that a motion to amend?
Well, as it, as it reads right now, we've, so we've, we've removed by president, put in the word lot, and then the next sentence in that says, "Seat adjustments may be made per discretion of the council president." So either we strike, we strike it and we put no seat adjustments, or we're just undoing what we've already set forward to do by making the change.
Right, I hear you. So you, so you would be making a motion to amend the proposal to strike, to also strike the final sentence of the existing rule?
Either we strike it or we add no seat adjustments to be made, or are we going to allow seat adjustments to be made so we don't have all, you know, four or five new counselors sitting on one side of the row as the seasoned counselors sit on the other? I'm just confused by what, what's, what's the purpose of what we're doing here?
All right. Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo the, the president's statement about the value of being able to position new council members, close to experienced council members. As someone who just spent their first year in the council, I believe it was a, a great benefit when we were actually meeting in person, and I, I did value that and thought it was, you know, very beneficial. I know there was also raised concerns, I know, in case a counselor has hearing issues, being able to position them towards the center of the action or closer, not on an extreme edge, has great value. I don't think this is necessarily a very important issue, and, you know, I don't have very strong feelings, but I do think there is some benefit to giving some thought and reason to the seating placements. However, if the, if this amendment is adopted, I would, would advocate that we amend the, or make a motion to amend the amendment to correct what appears to be a typo in the amendment, and "shall be determined by lot" rather than "shall he determine by lot."
All right, do I have a second on that, just as an amendment to the proposal?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Seeing as it is clerical, I'm going to ask for unanimous consent on that. Hearing no objection, it is so amended. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think that it would, it might not be a bad idea to leave that second sentence, "Seat adjustment may be made per discretion of the council president to accommodate incoming counselors and, and perhaps counselors with a hearing impairment or, or something else that requires their seat to be changed." They could approach the president and let the president know that it would be beneficial for them to, to sit in a different place, and it would allow the president to, to seat freshman counselors with experienced counselors. Thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
Yes, just, I just wanted to clarify, this amendment wouldn't be adding to the existing rule 1.8. It would be amending it completely to the words, "Seats in the council chamber for the members thereof shall be determined by lot." So we would need to amend this to add, to allow the council president to also make adjustments, and I'm, I prefer the by lot. I believe it, it removes any, any potential bias or any potential appearance of bias for determining seat adjustment, and I'd like to also remind counselors that probably the next time we go to our council meeting, it will be in the new council chambers, and we won't be sitting so close to one another in the designs that I saw. We will be a lot further apart, so we won't necessarily be able to chat with each other left and right like we're used to. So I don't, I don't find that it's important to seat freshman counselors next to each other, because I don't know if we should really be chatting with each other during council meetings like that anyway. So I'm fine with by lot, but I'm also amenable to allowing the council president to adjust it. I'm fine with that either way. Thank you.
And thank you, I did, I did just double check the wording, and you are correct, Counselor. It is intended as amend to, not amend by replacing a single sentence. So I have you on the list, Counselor Dina Tally, but if you'll give me just a moment, Vice President Walsh, did you want to recommend, did you want to move an amendment to specifically add in discretion?
Yes, I, I didn't realize that, that that, that the amendment suggested was replacing that entire section. So yes, I would, I would make a motion to amend the proposal so that after by lot, the next sentence would be, "Seat adjustments may be made per discretion of the council president."
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Anyone speaking on the motion? Counselor Dina Tally?
With, with this motion to amend, and, and what Counselor Green said earlier and Counselor Van Hasenga, the more I think about this, I don't, I don't really know why we're changing this thing, because the president's still going to have discretion to make changes as he or she sees fit, in this case, he. I mean, we, we already have a system in place where the president assigns the seating, and I failed to remember the other rationale for the change was the freshman counselor aspect, but, I mean, whether Counselor Walsh's proposal goes forward or not, I go back to the statements of other colleagues of mine, I don't understand what the, the difference is going to be here. I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of indifferent to this. I guess I don't care either way, but I don't know why we're changing something that, to me, is not broken. So the council president wants to seat people, I mean, I, I don't understand any arguments regarding there's bias or there's, I mean, what would, I don't understand that, but regardless of that, I guess it's up to the council. I, I won't support the motion because I, I don't see this as a necessary rule change. The, the, there was sound logic to change it as the president has stated, in, in addition to the reasons I provided, and now we're going to go back to a system where we're drawing it out of a hat, but the president can still change that drawing as he or she sees fit. I, I don't, so I think it's, I think it's, it's redundant. I don't, it's not going to change anything. If I don't like where I'm sitting and I appeal to the president to change my seat, obviously he can say, no, I'm not doing that, because I don't want to set a precedent or what have you, but he may say, okay, so what's the difference? I don't, I don't really get the difference, so I guess I'm leaning towards, just leave the rule alone. That's it, just leave it alone.
So I see.
I'll be voting against the motion, because I don't, I don't see it as changing anything in the long run. Thank you.
So very briefly, before I go to Counselor Schultz, I did just want to note that with Counselor Walsh's proposed amendment, I can really see this either way from my perspective. Having it drawn by lot and then having the president have discretion to make adjustments sort of reverses the presumption. It creates a presumption that the seats will be assigned by lot, and then the president can make adjustments with good reason, and I'm absolutely fine with that. I have no planned seating chart in my head or anything. So if, if, if the council would prefer that it be a random assignment, and then I look at it and say, okay, this isn't going to work, let's move these people around, that's fine, that's fine. If anyone who ever wants me to explain any decision that I make pursuant to my discretion can contact me at any time, and I'm more than happy to do that, so.
To me, it should just be either by lot or not by lot. The same rule we have now or just by lot. No discretion, because then we're, we're mixing things.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Dina Tally. I think this whole discussion really is not necessary, and just for the record, if I have a seat at the table, I don't care where the seat is. I'm flexible, and I, I don't think we should even continue this discussion. Thank you, Counselor Zarella.
Okay, so this is on Counselor Walsh's amendment to the proposal. I have a motion and seconds to amend, to add a sentence allowing the council president to adjust seating if necessary. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to please do it by roll call, since it's clear there is not unanimity.
Okay. Counselor Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Dina Tally?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Zarella? So that is eight to three? Yes.
All right, so the amendment has been made. Now, on the main motion, any further comment? I believe Counselor Boishman still has a rebuttal that he would like to give now that everyone has been heard?
Well, I was going to rebuttal, but you said it all when you said it. The reason why we did it was because we had a lot of freshman counselors coming on. That was the only reason why we did it. It wasn't because it changed anything, it was because we had quite a few freshman people coming on to the council chambers, and council president at the time felt that it would be nice if, if Anthony sat next to me, so that's why he did it.
It was indeed nice.
But that's it, that's the only thing I just wanted to, and this time here, I figure maybe when I pick my name out of the hat this time, I'll be able to sit next to my favorite counselor, Ma Christina Tally. That'd be even better.
All right, so if everyone has been heard on this subject.
Oh, you want to see that happen, right?
It's a guarantee now, right?
If everyone has been heard on this subject, I'll ask Madam Clerk to please call a roll.
Is this for it as amended, sir?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Counselor Kuschmerich?
No.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
No.
Counselor Dina Tally?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Zarella?
No.
All right, just one moment, please. It is defeated by seven to four.
Thank you. Moving on, and I apologize to my fellow counselors, I do have a number of small changes. I just figured at the end of the year, I should go through our rules and make sure everything was working as planned. There have also been some Zoom adjustments that I think will be helpful. So I've organ, I've organized the, oh, I have a motion from Counselor Dina Tally to adopt all changes. Is there a second on that motion?
Okay.
All right. Speaking on the motion, I have Counselor Green.
The one and only, and it was just for wording, would be for amendment rule change 1.3.
Yes.
The president shall annually report, and you want that to be considered as a may, and shall is more of a defined, like it will be done, where may is a loosey-goosey, maybe you'll get around to it, maybe you won't, so I just, in my mind, I just want to be clear on the word and what that really means for follow-through and instruction.
Thank you. So that was actually intentional. The idea was that there may be a case where there is no appropriate parliamentarian to appoint, and since the role of the parliamentarian is solely to aid the president, I, I have every anticipation that I'll be appointing a parliamentarian every year that I happen to be president, but I figured there was a hypothetical scenario where there may not be a good appointment to make, and so I wanted to make it optional for the president because there's no particular reason to force the president to name someone that he or she does not want to name if the sole reason for the position is to aid the president.
That, I mean, that clarified it, but so are we moving forwards, should we assume, and that word's probably going to get us into trouble, but will we always have a parliamentarian as part of our makeup of our council?
No, that's exactly the point. There might not always be one. If there is a scenario where there's simply no one else on the council or in city government who has a sufficient grasp of the rules to be useful as a parliamentarian, then there's no real point in naming one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, I see Counselor Dina Tally canceled. Counselor Squallia?
Thank you. Yes, I went through all these rule changes, and I'm fine with all of them, but, and taking them as a slate is fine. I would just like the city clerk to note on the record my objection to proposed amendment to rule 3.11. Thank you.
What was it again, 3. what?
1.1. And I just like to reemphasize, because I understand the reason for the counselor's objection, that this is in no way directed at any counselor. It's simply a result of experiences had on Zoom where it's been unclear in the past. The distinct, the verbal distinction between yay and nay can be blurred over bad speakers and so forth.
That's why I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I'd just like to express my, you know, on the record, because, you know, in our council rules, it notes yays and nays, and so that's why I use them, because it's in our rules. So if we're going to change them, I'll change, that's fine, but.
Okay, absolutely, so noted. And let's see, Counselor Kuschmerich canceled, so I believe that's. And let's see, Counselor Kusmerik canceled, so I believe that's it. Uh. Because there's such a large slate, I'm going to ask this to be done by roll call anyway, uh, even though I've heard no objection. Madam Clerk?
Okay, with the objection noticed by Counselor Squalia, Counselor Kusmerik.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President Zarella.
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Alright, thank you. And now we have our amendments completed, all that have been submitted. Uh. If there is no one who would like to speak on the matter of adopting the full rules, I'd ask that we just adopt them by unanimous consent for the coming year. Seeing no objection, the rules are adopted. Moving on, uh, we have the schedule which I would also ask be adopted by unanimous consent unless anyone has an objection. Seeing none, the schedule is adopted as printed for the coming year. And that concludes the business of the day.
Pick a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn and we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Thank you all and I'm looking forward to this year.
Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year, everyone.